I'd like to convene the regulars at the meeting of the PBD City Council. Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass., 7:30 June 13th. Please join me in a moment of silence.
So moved. May 23rd and May 29th.
All in favor and opposed to vote. This meeting is being televised live on Cable Access Channel 9, is being taped by PBD Access Television, and is also being recorded by our City Council's stenographer. If there's no objection, I'd like to move on the suspension of the rules and move to item. Mayor, which one was it?
It's 7D.
7C, excuse me. Various appointments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Council. I'm here today, very happy to be here today, to present to you for appointment as Cemetery Supervisor, Cemetery Superintendent Taylor McCallum. We went through a pretty intense and involved process of hiring. We had a number of applicants for the position to fill the very big shoes of Dave Cronin, and we interviewed four people for the position, four very strong candidates. Interviews were conducted by our Human Resources Director Beth O'Donnell and Dave Cronin, and then followed with an interview with me. Taylor has been with us now for about a year and a half in the Cemetery Department. He's currently been operating as the supervisor, and he's done a terrific job for us. He's been, has shown tremendous work ethic. He's, has some tremendous ideas of potential opportunities and growth in the Cemetery Department, and he has a real grasp and handle on his, on his work. But prior to that, he was working for the Town of Essex in the Department of Public Works. We were able to bring him over, and I think it's been an excellent hire for us. He's here tonight. He's a PBD boy, PBD graduate. He's here with his wife, his parents. He has a young family. Just recently bought, bought a house, and I think he's gonna do an excellent job for us. We have an outstanding Cemetery Department that's been built up over the years by some hard-working people, and I think Taylor will fill those shoes and do an excellent job for us. Taylor is here tonight, and certainly available to answer any questions, as am I. But I'm happy to present for appointment Cemetery Superintendent Taylor McCallum.
Mayor, thank you very much. Can I get a motion to receive a late communication? On your desks, there's a change to the term for Mr. McCallum's position on that late communication.
Move.
On the motion, all in favor and opposed, vote. If Mr. McCallum would like to come up and say a word, a few words, and introduce himself to the council, that'd be great.
Good evening, Council. My name's Taylor McCallum. I'm a lifelong PBD resident. I'm excited to start this new role. There is big shoes to fill. David showed me all the ropes, all the ups and downs, and everything to do. I plan on taking his job very seriously and keeping the PBD Cemeteries top-notch in the whole state of Massachusetts. And any questions, comments? My office is at Cedar Grove, and I'm always available. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to applaud this, this appointment. I know Taylor. I know what he's gonna, he's capable of. He comes from a great family, and, you know, I can just tell you, I, from, he's, he's essentially, as we talked about in the budget, gonna be operating it with a smaller staff, but he's a worker. He's gonna get his hands dirty. We, I had to, unfortunately, this past year bury my grandfather, and it was a muddy day, and we were, it was a real tough, getting over the, the stone, the other stones, and Taylor came sprinting over in the mud and helped us get him, get it in there, which was, you know, helpful. And he was a hands-on guy. A couple of people had mentioned to me, you know, they thought he, they thought he was with us. But I really appreciate this, what you put into this, especially Cedar Grove, and the other, and what you do, and I think you're gonna be a great asset to that, to that department and to the city. Thank you.
Council Saslaw.
Yes, I just wanna echo the comments of Council Melville, and I don't know a lot about Taylor, but I do know one thing is you've got stamina. You're here for four hours tonight, four hours last night, so I know at least you've got stamina. Good luck. Thank you.
Chairman.
Yeah, Council Gravel.
I wanna not only commend you, Taylor, but it's been a long time since I've seen you, you've grown a lot. And congratulate your mom and dad who are here. I think it's a wonderful thing.
Thank you very much. Oh, we do have to vote on the, roll call vote on the appointment. My fault. We have to get you in first. Can I get a motion to approve, Mr. McCallum?
Motion to approve Taylor McCallum for Superintendent of Cemetery.
On the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Metzulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Let's move to item 4A. The clerk will read the notice. Council McGinn, before the clerk reads the notice, do you see the petitioner in the, in the room? You do.
Okay. Notice is here by given that the City Council, the City PBD Acting As of Special Permit Granting Authority will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, June 13, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass., on the application from Hattim Lalami, 21 Cummings Park, Woodburn, Mass., for a special permit seeking to allow for a bakery wholesale at 119 Foster Street, Building 3, PBD Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.6, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. PBD City Council Counselor John G. Turco, City Council President.
After your record, could I have a petitioner approach the podium? Sir?
Boy, your timing couldn't be been better with this next.
Could you approach the podium? Sir, could you just give us, state your name and address for the record, and please tell us what you wanna do?
Hi, how are you? First of all, I would say thank you to everyone, to the mayor.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Hattim Lalami, and the address we wanna do the bakery, it's gonna be 119 Foster Street.
Thank you. You could tell us what you wanna do here.
Yeah, first of all, I wanna say thank you to everyone, the mayor, the chairman, the councils, and we're here hoping to open a production bakery here in the city of P Valley. We want to make some cookies. The production, we're gonna distribute around the cities and groceries and suppliers.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody here in the audience to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody here in the audience to speak in opposition to the petition? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The councilors, you got a late receipt on your desk. Move to receive late communication, the form of an email from Scott Wyckoff dated June 12th, 2019. So moved.
All in favor and opposed to vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been in contact with the applicant, Mr. Lalami, to review the feedback that councilors will see in their packet from the Health Department regarding this application. The application indicated there would be no dumpster, and of course, we know that's not realistic for this type of operation. This use has the potential for attracting rodents, and this is an area of the ward where there have been past rodent complaints. So Mr. Lalami discussed this with him previously, and he completely understands the concern and wants to be in full compliance with all the department feedback, in particular, the feedback that we received from the Health Department with respect to the Integrated Pest Management Plan. So I proposed the conditions, which are simply inputs from the Department of Public Services, the Fire Department, and the Health Department. Mr. Lalami is fully agreeable to those conditions. I support this application. I, I would point out that this late communication is from an abutter that deals with an issue of a maintenance of a right-of-way, a shared right-of-way. The applicant has been in touch, not only the applicant, but the property owner has been in touch with this abutter, and my understanding is that they've worked out some type of arrangement to address the, this maintenance issue on the shared right-of-way. It's really outside the purview of the council, so I'm not really gonna deal with that as a function of the special permit application. So again, I support this application. I defer to other councilors at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any questions from the council? Council Sharest.
Thank you, sir. The, you're doing only wholesale production, is that correct?
Yes, we're gonna do only production and wholesale. Yes, sir.
Are you an established bake shop now, or this is your first?
No, this is the first.
First one. And you're looking, just, just to look for retailers and supermarkets, as you say?
Absolutely, sir.
Well, I, I know a little bit about the bakeries industry, only 'cause I've been in it for probably 37 years, and it, it's, it's becoming quite a hotspot, PBD is, for bakeries. We, in the last couple of years, if, if that, maybe a year and a half, we have, got three bakeries that came into the city. So I welcome you. I know it's hard work. I do appreciate looking at PBD, and best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Any other councilors? Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just before I make the motion through to Council Charis, it, it has to be wholesale. Retail operation isn't allowed in that zoning district, so, and the, and the application is specific to wholesale. Move to approve the application from Hattim Lalami.
Council, could you close the public?
Yeah, move to close the public hearing.
All in favor and opposed to vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the application from Hattim Lalami, 21 Cummings Park, Woodburn, Mass., for a special permit seeking to allow for a bakery wholesale at 119 Rear Foster Street, Building 3, PBD Mass., as filed in accordance with Section 4.2.6, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance with the following conditions. Commercial kitchen equipment is required by NFPA 96, shall be tested and inspected by the PBD Fire Department. Number two, the applicant shall pump their three compartment sink monthly for the first nine months of operations, and shall prove of plumbing to our department. Care of the environmental engineer. After the first nine months, the applicant may request to modify the pumping schedule, and is to work with both the Department and the Health Department. To do so, the applicant shall continue to provide proof of pumping to the environmental engineer until such time as the department no longer requires it. An integrated pest management plan must be submitted to the PBD Health Board, PBD Board of Health. Wholesale operations, food operations must be licensed by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Mechanical systems shall be in place to prevent the migration of nuisance dust, odor, or other nuisance impacts from the property. In accordance with the special permit applications, business hours of operations are 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. Alleged violation of special permit conditions may result in a show cause hearing of the City Council. So moved.
On the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Metzulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Let's move to item 4B on the agenda. The clerk will read the notice.
Notice is here by given that the City Council, the City PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, June 13, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Frank L. Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD Mass., on the application from DND Auto Sales and Repair, 36 Walnut Street, PBD Mass., requesting to amend their Class II Motor Vehicle License by adding the name of Robinson Cruz, 78 Central Lab, Lynn, Mass., to said license that said 36 Walnut Street, PBD Mass. PBD City Council Counselor John G. Turco, City Council President.
Please state your name and address for the record, and tell us what you're looking to do.
It's Robinson Cruz, 76 B Walnut Street, in PBD. We just wanna invest a little bit more on the, on the sales and repairs on the shop.
Thank you. Is there anybody here in the audience to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody in the audience here to speak in opposition? Anybody here to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Council Metzulis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a pretty simple application. It's a pretty simple request here. The DND Auto Sales and Repair is already in operation at 36 Walnut Street. They've been there for a number of years, and what the applicant is looking for, he's not looking for any permits or anything. He's just looking to, to add an amendment so that he could add his name to the business. He's in partners with whoever his partner is, and he just wants to add his name to the, to the company, and that's the request he has this evening. There's a language barrier, and that's why I'm, I'm letting you know what it is. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council. I'll open it up. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Council Metzulis.
Make a motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor and opposed to vote, Council Metzulis.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a Class II Motor Vehicle License Amendment to DND Auto Sales and Repair at 36 Walnut Street for the purpose of adding the name of Robinson Cruz to the company or business, whatever it's being called. So moved. Thank you.
On the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Metzulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to nothing.
Item number five, reports of committee. Human Services Committee, Council Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Human Services Committee met this evening, myself as chair, councilors Melville and O'Neil, and Councilor Gould on the committee as well, and sitting in for Council Metzulis was Council Sharest. We had Steve Patton, the Veterans Agent, join us to give us an overview of all the great work that he has been doing in his office, and he really heaped a lot of praise on Lisa Levitt, really running a great program down there, and he wouldn't be able to, to accomplish so much without her expertise and her caring ways, and, and she's running the disability compensation claims, and they've increased incredibly, and they're doing great work down there. And they're doing such good work that they've had a couple of volunteers come in that are doing numerous hours a week, and the, it's come to light that the office that they're in, in this building, is much too tight and way too small to have grown with the amount of work that they're doing. So the, a motion by Councilor Melville was to reach out to the mayor and the council, the director of the Council on Aging, to see if there is office space there. Mr. Patton believes that it's the perfect location because he's got a great relationship there with the vets and the surviving spouses frequent that Council on Aging, so it's, it's very convenient, and he's got a great working relationship with the social workers down there as well. So that was in the form of a motion. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, Mr. Patton highlighted the volunteer Veterans Driving Program and indicated that the one vehicle that they do have, it really isn't enough, so they're looking, and the mayor, I believe, is looking to get another vehicle donated because the amount of veterans that are receiving the services is so much that the veterans that are providing the driving are, have, have to take their own vehicles, and they're spending their entire tax break of $500 on gas. So we'd like to take a look with the mayor and the Veterans Agent on other ways that we might be able to compensate the volunteers to save their benefit while they're volunteering and driving in, because that's a lot of gas money and mileage on their vehicles. So we're, we're gonna keep that in committee and work on that. And he also reported out that we are meeting a state law that requires that all veterans' graves are flagged, and we have 31 cemeteries in the city, and they have met that goal, and that's quite an accomplishment. So I thank Mr. Patton for joining us this evening, all the great work that they're doing. That program, he's really turned it around, and they're doing wonderful work for our veterans, and they're providing a lot of services, and really, just give them kudos. So that's a report on committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Manning Martin. Committee on Drug Education and Awareness, Council Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met this evening, and we, we will need two votes that did come out of subcommittee. We, this year, provided, created a scholarship for two graduating seniors going to college, and it is the City Council Public Service Award, and there were two seniors nominated, and the recipients will be going to college and will major in public service, whether it be public safety, fire safety, drug counseling, or any type of public service. And the recipients this year were Ryan Nagy, am I saying that right? Nagy? Sorry about that, Ryan. Ryan Nagy, and he's going to be going to Jacksonville, and he'll be studying law enforcement. And we did have Angelina Hoag. She'll, she was here this evening, and she spoke, she presented at subcommittee. She'll be going to Salem State, and she was actually the police chief on Student Government Day, and she will be studying law or fire science. So those were two recipients of $500 apiece. So one motion by Councilor Sharest was to fund $500 scholarship to Angelina Hoag from the City Council's Public Service Award. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Roll call vote.
Councilors Metzulis.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing, one absent.
Thank you, and the second recipient again was Ryan Nagy. Motion by Council Rosignol to award him $500 for the City Council Public Service Award. So moved.
On the motion, roll call vote.
Councilors Melville.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rosignol.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing, one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just a brief update, that the City Council Drug Education and Awareness Subcommittee will be having the Long Drive Fundraiser in memory of firefighter Dan Priminta on June 22nd, Saturday, at 6 o'clock, and we've also added a golf ball drop, and all 500 tickets have been sold, so folks come on down. If you don't golf, you can enjoy the ball drop and ice cream and silent auction. And again, the funds go to a great cause, to fund scholarships and other recovery initiatives that we donated to earlier this year. So that's a report of progress, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council, and we'll move to Committee on Energy, and, excuse me, Committee on Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy. Council Manning Martin.
Mr. Chairman, if you give me one second to find that. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met this evening, members, myself as chair, Council McGinn and Council O'Neil, and joining us were members of Green PBD with Rita Marie Covicchio, presenting on the Curbside Composting Program, and she gave a great presentation. Also joining her in presenting was Sharon Cameron of Public Health, and the program was highly recommended by Sharon Cameron for various reasons, cutting down on greenhouse gases, rodents, and also tipping fees. So this is a program, and it's completely voluntary, and Rita Marie is looking to promote it to get folks to opt in, and if you get 300 people from a community to opt in, curbside composting, then the, the rates go down, and if you get 300 people to opt in, it's $120 a year, and they provide the canister, and it is curbside pickup once a week. And the company that she, she suggests we work with is Black Earth Company to local waste management in Manchester, and what they do is they basically turn all types of waste, eggs, was it meat, everything, and they turn it into soil. So all around, it is a, sounds like a pretty fascinating and interesting program, so we are going to get the word out to folks and assist Green PBD in getting some people interested in joining the program. So there was a motion to put, to request that the mayor reach out to PMLP to see if we can put a notice of this information out in the light bill, as a motion by Councilor Gould. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, to vote.
Mr. Chairman, and we also suggested by Council Gravel was to put it up on the PBD website, and also to put up a public service announcement through PATV, and Tim's gonna take care of that for us. That is a report of progress. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council. We'll move to Finance Committee. Two meetings, June 11th and June 13th, and Council Gravel.
First of all, I apologize for the late meeting this evening. It's, the Finance Committee did meet on both nights. It's just a report of progress at the moment. We're in recess, so we'll report out fully after the next meeting, which is Tuesday evening, 7:00 PM, here in the Wigan Auditorium.
Thank you, Council. We'll move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Council Metzulis.
I have no motions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to schedule a municipal marijuana subcommittee meeting, maybe in, one of the meetings in August, after we, the summer recess, Tim. I'd like to request that we get an update from the two special permit holders on their current progress. Also, if we could get the two signed host agreements, and I would also request that the city solicitor be present if we should have any questions. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, to vote.
Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8D and set up a public hearing. So moved.
On the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Tim, excuse me, threw you to the clerk. I guess there's a numbering issue there. That's probably 8B. Whether it's B or D, one of those two. Moving right along. Suspension of the...
8B is the special permit for 150 Main.
Yeah, so, the correct motion was 8B.
Yep.
And, Mr. President, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 9G and set up a public hearing. So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Council Rozignow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under suspension of the rules, I'd like to receive and approve all papers being in order, 9D. You want to take them individually, or all three?
Yeah, you can read all three, Council. 9D, Block Party, here.
So that is for Block Party, for Two Travis Terrace, Bristol Road, as well as Emily Lane. So moved.
Counselor Sharest?
Yeah, I just had one concern. One of them I see they're looking for 18 barrels, and that is on the July 4th, where I know a lot of the ward uses a lot of barrels already. Yeah. Am I looking, it says barrels 18. And I just, I don't want to say we're giving them 18 when we may not have 18 because of the 4th of July picnics, if we can just look on that. I need a few for Ward 4, so. So moved. That's all, just questioning that.
Right. I don't think Public Services is going to bring them 18 barrels. But I'll let Public Services sort that out if you don't mind. On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Also, motion to receive a late communication regarding one of those Block Parties. So moved.
Yep, that's the same one as Emily Lane.
Okay, so that's, we need to receive it and approve it again?
No.
Thank you, Councilor. Any more motions? Council Manning-Martin.
Mr. Chairman, co-motion with Ward 4 Councilor Sharest and probably Ward 2, Council McGinn, to put some signage up directing people to the Police and Fire Memorial. It's been brought to my attention that there is no signage and people are looking for it. So, I think maybe in Ward 2 when Ward 4. So, so moved.
On the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Further motions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Sasla.
Thank you. Suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8, I believe it is C. All papers being ordered and set up a public special permit hearing.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
No other motions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Counsel Sharest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Liked to make a, asked Tim to set up a Subcommittee on Public Service to address the trash barrels. Got a notice from Tim. If you can look at the schedule, seeing where we can do that. Check. I know that's been an issue that's on. Set up a meeting.
I didn't get what the motion was, that's all.
I know I put you to sleep, but you know.
All the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And ask for Public Works to install hash marks on all locations where there is a left-hand turn, at least 100 feet prior to the double lane starting up. So, I'm not saying it correctly, but if you look today, there's been an accident, yesterday has been an accident, today was earlier, today was two accidents. When you're coming down toward a set of lights and there's a left-hand turn, and there's a small white line painted to divide the road into two, cars are coming 200 feet, 200 yards could be, down the road, especially on Lowell Street, to make a double lane out of a single lane. Vehicle coming out of a side street on Lowell Street, going, making a left-hand turn to go west, the car coming east stopped to allow them to pull out and come out. A car came down on the left-hand side over the double yellow line and ran into them. Thank God he didn't have a small child in the backseat, because we would probably be looking at the different headlines today. This is constantly going on. We have one that was just recently redone on Lowell Street, going from east to west before Forest Street. It works tremendously. We do have people that still cross over that white line to make two lines, but people are just moving over to allow this double line. I know, Council Turco, you have it over by, on Linfield and Summit Street there, and it's dangerous. We need to do what we can to prevent these man-made two-lane roads. So, the motion is to paint a white line a minimum of 100 feet prior to that lane becoming two lanes. So moved.
On the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
One other one was to, just to tell people, slow down. Going through the city, just slow down. I know there's traffic, but, I mean, within the last couple days, I personally saw five accidents. Five. All right? I lectured you long enough. The next one is, to all the dads out there, Happy Father's Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Co-motion with Councilor Metzulis to have the sidewalk fixed at 27 Lincoln Road. So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Co-motion with Councilor Charis to have a trash barrel put in the vicinity of the Police and Fire Memorial. So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Co-motion with Councilor Metzulis to have a tree replaced. There was a tree taken down at 41 Margin Street, and the resident would like a new sidewalk tree put up at 41 Margin Street. So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Tim, can we schedule an industrial community development meeting? We have...
We're scheduled for June 27th.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. No further motions, Mr. President. Thank you.
And, Councilor Gould, could you receive item 8A?
So moved. Receive item 8A.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council Gravel.
Thank you, Council President. Under suspension of rules, I would like to receive item 7A, B, and C, they're all marked appropriately, Tim, and refer them to the Finance Committee.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, I have no further motions this evening, but I would like to make a statement to the City Council. For several months now, I've been contemplating whether I would be announcing my candidacy for a seventh term on the City Council. Many of you, including my family, friends, and supporters, have given me your patience and your guidance on this matter. Many times, I thought to myself, why not? But somehow, my instinct and actions were telling me a different story. From my first run of office, which I lost, by the way, in 1981, through 10 additional elections, I have never once hesitated in my decision to run. I simply pulled my papers and went at it. This week, reflecting on that fact, I knew the answer was right in front of me. As a result, tonight, I would like to inform my colleagues on the Council, the mayor, and the public that I will not seek reelection to the Peabody City Council. With plenty of time to seek nomination papers, my hope is that others in the community will see this as an opportunity and bring new talent and desire to serve on this Council. I've loved my involvement and the time I have spent in 20 years of elected office. I have no regrets. I simply think that it is time for me to start a new chapter in my life. Right now, that new chapter includes more time with my wife and my growing family, as well as our growing business, which, by the way, this year is 25 years old and is now employing over 50 employees. In this new chapter, I also plan to continue intensifying my involvement with the Peabody Education Foundation to help our schools meet the needs of our students, the Peabody Main Streets Organization to help us revitalize our downtown, the YMCA as it continues to grow and service many of the families in our city, and Santa's Magic to bring joy and comfort to our veterans at Christmas. I also recently accepted a position on the Board of Directors of the Merrimack Valley Elder Services, which just merged with the North Shore Elder Services, to ensure and to act as one of Peabody's representatives for our senior citizens. I also recently accepted a position on the Board of Directors of North Shore Workforce Investment Board as a vice chair tasked with helping to make a technology curriculum more relevant in our high schools and colleges to the needs of the modern workforce. I'm not going to make up, take up any more of your time tonight with a goodbye speech because I still have six months to serve. I do want you all to know that I intend to serve with the same intensity and desire that I brought to the task from the beginning, and I will do it until the last minute of my last meeting. In closing, I want to thank my wife, my family, my friends, and all those who supported me through the years with their vote. It's an honor to serve, a very honor to serve, and I only hope that I have and will continue to live up to their expectations. Again, thank you all for your patience as I work through this very difficult personal decision. Thank you.
Thank you. To Council Gravel, I just want to say congratulations on your decision. And I want to say thank you. The time flies by, as you know better than anybody, and when I got involved and came back to Peabody and established my roots, you were probably one of the first politicians I met, and I worked on your campaign. I learned a lot. And it wasn't about running a campaign, I learned about putting people together and how to be a leader. And you've done that. I consider you one of my mentors. I'm going to miss you, you know that. But more importantly, your wisdom, your advice, your humor, and everything else you brought to the table. And the one thing you did, Dave, is, you know, you walked your walk. You didn't just talk it. You're out front, you participate, and you led, and you led by example, and you built a company. And not the fact that you built a company that's successful, but more importantly, you build a company that I see your employees also invest in the community. So, you have a tremendous amount to be proud of, and I'm personally going to miss you. I'll enjoy working with you closely these next six months, but I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done, and I'll continue to try and learn from you, and I'm not ever going to hesitate to pick up the phone. Need I, need some advice. Thank you. Good luck.
Dave, one thing I didn't hear in that speech was that you were going to slow down and do less. So, I hear there are all those new boards and new positions that you have joined or taken a different position with, and again, just shows the type of person you are, that you want to get things done. And never once did you say, I want to slow down. I want to enjoy and relax a little bit more. So, Dave, you know how I feel about you, and I am very honored about the nice things you have said about me out in public, and I will never forget that. Thank you.
Council Rozignow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dave, quietly, I've always looked up to you. You were on the school board. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to serve with you on the school board, but it's been an honor to serve with you these past year and a half, and I appreciate what you bring to every meeting, your knowledge, your wisdom, and your ability to always stay fast and steadfast to your convictions. It's absolutely been an honor to learn from you. Thank you.
Council Metzulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wasn't really prepared to say anything, Dave, but, you know, I've known you so long, it's like I had to say something. It's like you and I are the end of an era that I think only you and I understand, because we come from that era and being brought up in Peabody. I've watched you get into politics, and I was really surprised that you were ever interested. I got interested a little before you did, and I seen you at certain debates I went to and said, who is this kid, you know? And I saw you get involved, and you've proved yourself, you're a very talented kid. I'm going to have things to say about you as we go along, but beside your talent and what you bring to the city, the one thing I know about you is you're a true Peabody guy. You're really, really a nice kid. And to me, that's very important. I think the people in Peabody appreciate you, and that's how they know you. They, you know, I know you as a businessman. I know you as, as a lot of the successes you've made for yourself and achieved for yourself, but I also know you as the person. You're really a good guy, and I'm very proud to say that I'm a friend of yours. Thank you, and good luck, David.
Counsel Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, you know, Dave listed off quite a bit of what he's active in, what he's done. You know, myself, I'm a benef, I, myself and my family really benefited from all the stuff that Dave and Kathy, people might not see. And I remember when you lived on Sherman Street, or were still connected to that area, and my, you know, all, everything you did for the boosters, for the track team that my sister participated in. And my father, when he was very, very sick, always really enjoyed spending time with you, Dave, and all the things you did, and he would say that you're somebody to look forward, look up to. And I'm, I can tell you, a lot of the programs and things that you started, I benefited from, and that's one reason why I'm here today. So, I want to thank you for everything you've done.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. David, I don't know where to begin, other than to say thanks for everything. Thanks for the mentoring. You are far and away the most charitable person in the city of Peabody, head and shoulders above everybody, and you've set the bar for that. There's a number of other things we could talk about, but thank you for your charity and goodwill towards human beings. I appreciate it, David. Thank you.
Council Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Dave, you have Demo calling you a kid, and you got Ryan really making you sound really old. I've served with you for 20 years, Dave, and, you know, you're my friend. You're a good guy.
Very briefly, I will say, Councilor Gravel, and just being honest, I never really liked you when we, when, before I got elected.
Is that why when I ran for state rep, you wouldn't let me put a sign in your yard?
We, we live in the same neighborhood, very close, and I had walked by, you know, 100 times, and we really never exchanged anything. And I, you know, you know, and I think that when I got on the Council, I, when I officially met you and learned who you were and what you were about, instead of making a judgment call from a distance, and I did feel it was necessary for me to mention that, because from the day that I met you on this Council, I knew that I was wrong about who you were. And I really watched everything you did for four years that I've been on this Council, and I tried to emulate everything you've done. And I think you're an excellent counselor. I think this Council will miss you. I think this, this city will miss you. And honestly, I can't thank you enough for the things you've done for Ward 1. When I think about the Ella O'Donnell Playground and the research for Randy playground, and everything else people ask you for on a daily basis, you've never said no, and you've always been there, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate what you've taught me for the last four years. what you've taught me for the last four years. So, you are a good man, and I'm man enough to admit that I made a false judgment about you. Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Gravel, we're going to have another six months to say nice things about you, and it's going to be a long list, so I'm going to reserve comment for overtime, but I do want to say, Mr. President, they broke the mold with you, pal.[1476.12][1476.12](LAUGHTER). That? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your service, Council Gravel.
We have items 9A, B, C, D, and E, if somebody would like to take those.
Mr. President... Thank you, Mr. President. I, Council Gravel made a motion on 7A, B, and C. I don't think he intended to include C, because that was some of the appointments, and we had that late communication tonight, and you pointed out earlier, Mr. President, that there was a clarification on the term in there, but I also saw that when I looked at the two documents, one individual fell off of that appointment list, which was James DeGiulio to the Conservation Commission. So I don't know if that, Tim, do you happen to know if that was intentional, or if that was just, I don't, you know, if, if he's been pulled out of...
I'm not sure, Counselor. Talking with Allison, the, the original document was corrected. I don't know if Mr. DeGiulio was mistakenly taken off the amended copy. I can't answer that question.
Since we don't know, Mr. President, I'm going to suggest maybe we put that one to the side for this evening, and so I would make a motion to, we've already addressed Mr. Melville earlier this evening, so I would make a motion to approve all of the various appointments on the mayor's communication dated June 7, 2019, that's a late communication this evening, that does not include that, that individual that was on the original attachment, 7, item 7C, so moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. We still have 9A, B, C, D, and E?
9A, junk dealer's license, 2019 renewal, Newberry Comics, 210 Andover Street, move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
All in favor, any opposed, to vote.
9B, taxi limousine, driver's license, Paul Peterson, license 4, Anthony Rossino, license 6, Santo Azoria, license 7, Juan Carlos Roman, license 8, David Labadini, license 9, move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote.
Is 9C still open?
C is still open, D is all set.
9C, use of the Wigan Auditorium, Girl Scouts Peabody, June 25, 2019, Jean Stico Corsara Addis, October 30th and 31st, 2019, move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
All in favor, any opposed, to vote.
9E is a taxicab, license transfer, Tri-City, 55 hour Waller Street, move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
All in favor, any opposed, it is a vote.
9F is a taxicab license, non-city, AmeriCab Taxi, 92 Jackson Street, number 204B Salem, two licenses, Salem Taxi Company LLC, 30 Federal Street, number 302 Salem, two licenses, Witch City Taxi, 92 Jackson Street, Suite 206 Salem, two licenses, move to receive and approve, subject to all papers being in order.
All in favor, any opposed?
Mr. President, on that motion, threw you to the clerk. There's no hearings required on these.
There isn't, Counsel. This is the, this is the recently, this is the new ordinance where we're allowing the non-city cabs coming in, so we felt that a hearing was not required. They're already licensed in Salem, they've proven to us they're only coming here and allowing to pick up and drop off, so we didn't feel a hearing was necessary.
Thank you, and just, and the same applies on that transfer on, on item E, 9E, that's a, that doesn't require a, since that's a new...
9E is just a simple transfer, Counsel.
Simple transfer, thank you. Thank you for the clarification on both of those. Thank you, Mr. President.
All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Chairman, have a good evening. Ladies and gentlemen.